Okay, thank you everyone, we'll commence tonight's meeting. But to acknowledge that this meeting is held on Bangla land and we give thanks for the use of this land. To God, we humbly beseech thee to grant thy blessings upon the works of this council to direct and prosper its deliberations to the advancement of this city as the true and lasting welfare of the people of this municipality. I will now read the obituary notices and then we'll have a silence to pay our respects. But to pay our respects to George Heading, Jared Jay, Patricia Dartman, Adrian Rowe, Justin Robinson, Peter Hasil, Lorna Ferdinand, Susan Mitchell, Barbara Jarrett, Bruce Wisdom, Arthur Cass, David Rogers, Tricia Bone, Michelle Bland, Terence Simmons, Ryan Burke, Ronald Petty, Margaret Leishki, Brian James, Tricia Duffy, and Sandra Banklin. Thank you, councillors. Item four, attendance records. We have two apologies tonight from councillor Pond and councillor Santuzzi. If absences there are none. Item five, declarations of members' conflicts of interest. Councillors, are there any? If you can please let me know. Councillor Knox, is the microphone on?
Oh, I can hear you.
Is the one in front of you? I'll have a perceived call.
Just for the mayor, just for the purpose of the public record, tonight there will be no discussion regarding the Triple Y building. So whilst you declared perceived conflict of interest, councillor Knox, that won't be an issue this evening.
Right. I'd like to now go to, as I know, other conflicts. And I also would like to mention that councillor Stupos is attending this meeting. Thank you, councillor Stupos. Item six, minutes of the previous meeting. For the ordinary council meeting held on the 19th of May 2022, there's a recommendation there. Thank you councillor Marshall. Councillor Simpson, thank you. Flows in favour? Thank you, that is carried. Item 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on the 2nd of May 2022. May I have a move it for that recommendation, please? You need to use your microphones, councillors too. Thank you. Councillor Westerman, thank you. Councillor Marshall, thank you councillor Marshall. Discussions or discussions, ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, thank you, that is now. Okay. Item seven, deputations and presentations, there are nil. Item eight, petitions, there is also nil. Item nine, matters adjourned or deferred, is there 9.1, the resubmission of the Whitehead Building? As listed there, it's your item 19.2.1. Item 10, public question times. This evening, we have given the opportunity to the community as per our council legislation that for the members of the public can come and speak to our annual business plan if they choose. And we allow an hour's time for that to occur. So as there are there are no members in the public that wish to speak to that tonight in the chamber, we will continue on by that allowances for one hour. Right, thank you. Item 11, elected members' activities. They are up on the screen. And while they have been shown on the screen, I'll ask any of the members if they'd like to speak to anything they have attended over the last month. I'd also like to acknowledge deputy mayor Stone for covering me when I was away on bereavement leave, so thank you for that. Well, deputy mayor Stone. So does anyone want to speak to any of their activities? Just take that as read and understood. Okay, that's fine, thank you councillors for attending those last month. Okay. Item 12, 12.1, the audit committee meetings minutes from the 9th of May 2022. The recommendations that councillor received in the minutes of this particular meeting. Someone like to move that recommendation, please? Thank you councillor Simpson. Sorry. Councillor Stupos. Seconding, sorry, apologies, thank you councillor Stupos. Thank you for that. No questions or discussions around that? Ask for a show of hands for them to cast all those in favour? Excellent councillors, that. Thank you. Right, item 13, 13.1, officer CEOs executives' annual reports. And we'll start with the 13.1.1 CEOs' action reports. We'll take it as read, did you want to speak to any of that particular CEO? Just take that as read and understood. Are there any questions from any councillors? Councillor Knox, so you can move it. Thank you, so we'll just go to moving it, thank you councillor Knox. Councillor Westerman will second that, thank you councillor Westerman. Ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent. That is carried. Item 13.1.2, the Powerline Environment Committee call for nomination. The council nominate a person for a position on the Powerline Environment Committee for a three-year term and note the report under reference. CEO, did you want to speak to this if anyone you would think would be suitable or has shown interest in the position? And if not, is that okay for us not to nominate someone? I'll leave you to speak to them. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. And no, there's no requirement for council to put forward the nomination to date. I've not received any indication from any councillors that have a particular interest. But certainly it's now open for any councillors to nominate if they want to be.
Or staff.
Just pull that.
Or a staff person. But it did stay in the report that they have to be. Or, you know, experienced in this particular area. So that's incredibly important. Not just a nomination, you can just give it, it has an important purpose, it's wrong. Okay. So I take that there is no nomination from this particular chamber because we perhaps don't have the right person for that particular role or someone that shows some interest, so we'll just let that one. We can move that, so we'll move and second that there is not to be a nomination. Yeah, thank you. So the recommendation that actually a person. That can be moved, thank you by councillor Marshall. Thank you. Show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent. Thank you. Okay, 13.1.3. The local government transport advisory panel and calling for nominations there. So it's a similar story, this particular nomination. CEO, have you received any interest or anyone? No, that not be the case? Okay, thank you. So is there, are no other nominations particularly from our, it's obviously a statewide request. But this, that's not a problem. Okay, so we will not be nominating anyone from our council, so I would like to have someone move. But that we will, that be the case, but we've just noted that. Councillor Marshall. Councillor Knox, thank you. Flows in favour? Excellent, thank you councillors. 13.2. We'll go straight into point one, which is the budget review for 2122, order three. Right. Did any staff want to speak to this, we'll take this as read at this point?
I'd
CEO?
Yes, through the mayor, just given the importance of the budget, I think it would be appropriate if our manager of finance had just provided a brief synopsis of the results to date.
Question, Grant?
Ah, thank you, through the chair. So I guess the main story I raised is that the overall budget position of council was actually fairly current view. Other than a couple of final items that I'll explain. So the federal government this year has decided to pay three quarters of the financial assistance grants in advance. Over the past few years, they've always paid two quarters in advance. So in fact, each year we've got one year's worth of the grants. This year they've they've started to pay three quarters of the grants and said, well, actually, in effect, get five quarters off the grants. She didn't actually So what that has done is actually impacted our operating result positively by that amount. Which is about what we're forward. Those extra that we've got this year that at some point in the future that will likely, you know, rest itself as well as the other two quarters. But we will see that our adjusted operating result basically takes out that impact and shows that we're still actually in a position. So that certain position showing in the moment of view is actually just a due to that time difference. And as normal during a quick budget review, we've also picked up the projects carried forward that we do not have the project schedules, that sort of thing. We've picked up a majority of those projects that might be completed this year, but will be completed next year. We did have a very large capital program this year, over about $25 million. And it was always meant that some of those projects will continue to go into next year. So we've done a best estimate of the split between this year and next year for those projects. So that obviously drops that operating result this year and it's going to work out next financial year instead. As I said, most of our overall position was fairly consistent, the exception being as well that the airport result is slightly worse with a way that offset that in other council budgets and that's due less. The impacts over the last sort of December to March on passenger runs and the updated projections of passenger runs this financial year.
Thank you, Grant. So there seems to be no questions, I'll have to remove that recommendation, please? Thank you councillor Simpson and councillor Marshall who seconded that. Show of hands, all those in favour? Hands always in favour? Yep, that's carried, thank you. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions.
I didn't see you put your hand up.
That's all right.
Do you want to go back? We can go if I can ask the questions.
Look, I can leave until confidentialist to deal with the council building.
Okay, yep, that's fine. Thank you much.
Ta.
Thank you councillor Stupos. I didn't see you put your hand up, that's why I didn't ask that. Feature speed. Thank you, okay, so that has been moved, thank you. So item 13.2.2.
Are we going to move the motion?
Sorry?
Are we going to move the motion on 13.2.1?
You did that.
What, did we? I didn't raise my hand. It's all right.
There's a mover and a seconder and then ask people to raise their hand.
Right.
Can you hear me okay councillor Stupos? Yep.
It cuts in and out at times.
Right, thank you, I'll make sure I'm speaking at that. Right. So item 13.2.2 on page 74, the treasury management policy review. Did any, do you want to speak to that? Thank you, Grant.
Thank you through the chair. So just briefly, this is a review of two years of our current treasury management policy. As you're already quite aware, that is quite a contemporary modern sort of treasury management policy. The only change we're suggesting is one was actually discussed at the Labour Committee two years ago originally, I thought it. Was just popping the target range for the fixed interest rates. So that basically we have a balanced approach to fixed and variable interest rates. So the goal now will be 50% of loans to be fixed over an average year. With a range of between 70 to allow for timing.
Okay. Thank you. There was, I asked someone to move that recommendation, thank you. Thank you councillor Marshall, seconding. Show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Right, item 13.2.3.
That is one.
So that's granted.
Councillor Stupos? Are you on mute if you wanted to speak or you're just voting on that particular recommendation?
Yeah, no, you don't ask for discussions, I can't hear you. With regards to that policy, I noticed that it handles the risk assessment on rate fluctuations etcetera. Is there any particular reason why there's no risk on borrowings? Why there's no highs and lows? Yep, I just can't work out why we have an assessment on only having so much of our funds in fixed and so much in variable. But what about borrowing?
So the theory behind that is the policy itself is not committing council to any borrowings. Policy is about how we manage the borrowings that because of adopted budgets, more budget reviews. So the budget, the budget review itself is the one that commits council to a borrowing position. The treasury management policy is simply the mechanism by which we manage our cash. And the policy has a position that we don't actually fix borrowings because at any particular point in time, interest rates are low. We actually fix borrowings to stay within the target ranges and then simply to reduce our interest rate exposure.
That's fair enough, Grant, but what about?
Would you like to speak to that? Can you speak to the microphone a bit closer, sorry, it's hard to hear you.
So who do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm hoping for your response councillor Stupos.
Oh, thank you. I accept what Grant said, but surely we have ratios that we can't exceed. I mean, you know, there's no point in borrowing more than we can afford. We have liquidity ratios to meet etcetera, why aren't they in policy form as well?
Okay, so they actually set out in our, I'm going to set the policy on our budget and budget review process. So that actually sets out those targets. As I said, this policy really just focuses on the management of the borrowings. Through decisions made through the budget process. So yeah, those target ranges to speak about are in our budget policy.
All right.
Okay. Thank you councillor Stupos. Right, thank you. So, okay, we have a mover and a seconder there with regards to this particular recommendation. I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Item 13.2.3, the dog and cat registration phase 2022. Any staff want to speak to this? Like this has been read?
This way.
Thank you. Are you moving that councillor Marshall? Thank you. And deputy mayor Stone is seconding that, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried. 13.2.4, the monthly budget report. Did you want to speak to this? We'll take it as read.
Thanks, right, I'm going to answer any questions. Obviously the main thing within this report is that there's a quarterly project update, but most of the other people are in line with the budget review, just.
Will you remove that councillor Knox? Thank you. Thank you councillor Westerman for that, thank you. Show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, that's carried. Right. 13.2.5. This is just to reschedule our June council meeting. Thank you, it's, I'll take it straightforward. Thank you councillor Marshall, you're moving that? Thank you. Seconding that, deputy mayor Stone, thank you, appreciate. Ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, that is.
Ask a question please.
Yes, you may.
How do you think you may go on through the?
At this stage, no, at this stage, I need myself a thing, but the CEO can speak to the councillors about that after the meeting. You wish? Thank you. Right, okay, and we go to 13 point. No, we've done that, so we've got a mover and a seconder, that's done, thank you. 13.2.6. Page 106. Okay. Right, so this is the exemption from the council procurement policy for the provision of animal management services. The recommendation is there on the screen. Did I take this as read, I guess? I think it's a fairly straightforward report. So if that be the case, councillor Marshall, are you moving this? Thank you councillor.
I was actually wanting to add a comment.
All right.
My concern on page 109, I do have no dispute with the RSPCA being involved. And my comments will lead on to when there is negotiations, I can hope. But I'm concerned that the impact on the financial, or the potential financial implications by us now being looked at to provide costs for the re-homing of animals. We're almost at $225,000 now. That is one of my concerns, the way we're going down the path as to costs that are going to be offloaded on through local government in our situation by a council to re-home. What I would like to see included in future reports as far as this would be, how do other councils, regional and suburban, handle it? I think we're in an ugly situation, the community see that that's what we should be doing, looking after the poor animals. And I'm an animal lover because we had a cat for almost 18 years. But is it reasonable, what's that extra cost going to be? And how do other authorities handle it? I certainly want that included in the future report of the negotiations, that's my only concern.
That's a fair question, thank you. Yeah, I was going to do that, so you.
I'll second it.
You have a second?
Yeah.
CEO, would you like to speak?
Yeah, this is the response to the question. This specifically covers the issue of the extension or the exemption from the procurement policy specifically in terms of arrangements. The separate matter that you raised will be subject to a separate report.
Yes, the only reason I'll raise it now is that this now gives you the opportunity to go and negotiate.
Okay, and I'll allow you bringing that question up, it might not relevant to this particular recommendation, but a good question in itself, thank you. We have a mover and a seconder there, ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, that's carried. Page 111, 13.2.7, feedback on Escoza's proposed framework and approach. I'm going to ask the CEO if he'd like to speak to this at the moment or take this as read. Do you want to make any comments?
Yeah, this one is a little bit more complex in its nature, so I might ask the director of corporate services just to introduce this subject and then possibly the manager of finance to make some comments.
Yeah, I think that everyone's happy with that? Thank you. Thank you, Catherine.
Yes, thank you through the chair. As part of the local government reforms that are being introduced over the last 12 months and over the next 12 months, the proposed framework for the review of strategic management plans of councils is being introduced. This comes off the back of the previous discussions across local government in terms of rate capping, whereby rate capping certainly wasn't seen as the methodology for oversight of rates of local government to ensure that the infrastructure investment is actually maintained and upheld. So this is a scheme which has been introduced as part of the local government reforms. The proposal that is coming from Escoza as an independent reviewing party of rates and strategic management plans of councils. There are some concerns across local government in terms of the methodology that that review will undertake. The Local Government Association is certainly consulting with councils and we as a council have looked at this together with the audit committee. One of the comments that I'll make in relation to this scheme is one of the important things will be for Escoza not to treat this as a one-size-fits-all for all councils because of the very unique different circumstances that each council has and also the different circumstances between metropolitan councils and regional councils. Certainly there are different population metrics, different financial metrics, different metrics in the context of the age and useful life left of council assets across the board. So one-size-fits-all is really going to not be a system that would add benefit to councils. However, if this system is actually developed and implemented in a way which shows greater transparencies and gets greater insight and feedback into strategic management plans and rating propositions by council, it certainly has the opportunity to be something that will make a great contribution to local government and a great input into the discussions that councils can have with their local communities in terms of the setting of rates and ongoing financial sustainability. However, again, we do have concerns. The size of the task that is before Escoza in terms of data collection and understanding of local government may give rise to a methodology that becomes a one-size-fits-all and that is one of the concerns. And I'll pause there, hand over to Grant for some more specific comments in terms of our concerns with the framework. But we are, just from my perspective, recommending that council do make this submission to Escoza because it's really important that a regional voice be heard in the setting of policies and frameworks of this nature.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you through the chair. So I guess this response has been drafted in sort of a couple of steps. So we have received the LGA's original position on the proposal from Escoza. And we have actually written through that, we've supported the LGA's position. on the proposal from Escoza, um, and we have actually written through that, we've supported the LGA's position, um. The, the thinking behind it is the LGA have actually been very closely involved in this process and, um, you know, trying to actually get something within the Act that is good for the centre, um, as a replacement for the original position of rate capping of the, um, local government. And so they understand, um, the legislative, um, the way it's written, um, and so they understand where Escoza potentially tried to push some of the boundaries of maybe what the legislation is actually trying to achieve. And try to almost, uh, increase the scope of what they're actually doing under this review. Um, so, you know, we support the LGA's position, um, on that and including the fact that, um, yeah, while it was only around the fee that given in Parliament, there was a discussion of the, of the scheme costing, you know, council about twenty thousand dollars per, um, time that you were, um, reviewed over a four year cycle, uh, whereas now the position of advice goes without the first round of costs, it's just. And that's quite a thing, you can imagine, it's a big amount for us, but you can imagine what sort of, um, cost that would be for some small, yeah, initially, I suppose, something. Um, and so then we've also had discussions, um, uh, as, uh, in general as administration and with the Audit Committee at last week's meeting. And so we've also incorporated some of those extra concerns, I guess, from, um, well, um, into, um, the submission that we were making. Um, so, you know, one, a great point brought up was around the fact that, you know, in, uh, audit damage here for around sixteen thousand dollars. That's quite an extensive process, I would say, and that sort of shows that, you know, this cost is, uh, three, uh, three times what our set of order processes is. Um, and that might suggest that it's far too high for what is actually probably achieved here. Um, but yeah, there were other considerations, I would say, around, um, the impacts on regional councils and, and even whether it's the Escoza actually have the, the understanding, um, to, to undertake this review. And if, and we've said that, that knowledge might take time to build up, but because of that, they should actually start speaking as a small thing and build up the understanding. And then over the next cycle, that could become a bigger thing as they actually understand and just feel what that is applying on them. Because they've got, uh, the, the, it is normally a fairly, um, I mean, it's like a field interest that you might have for, uh, work, uh, those sorts of things. And so, um, yeah, we all have ourselves the common space and, uh, because everything else, right? Um, so, yeah.
Cathy, you have the recommendation? Yeah, I, I just want to commend the report too, I think it's. So, uh, thank you councillor. Deputy Mayor is, Stone is seconding.
Seconding, and I would too like to commend the author, authors, authors of the degree of analysis there, definitely.
Councillor, sorry, sorry, I just, councillor Stipos, have you got a question?
Yeah, several actually, um.
Okay, thank you.
Number one, um, in the paper, there was no design work as to what the reports are going to look like at the end. I'm very, very curious about that because, um, Cathy was rightfully pointing out that it'd be nice if we could, uh, compare apples with apples as opposed to apples with lemons. That's my number one. Uh, my number two question was, can we make a recommendation? Because all councils aren't the same, um, you know, we do certain things like every other council, like our rates, bin collection and things like that. Um, that the financial reports be given on that basis. And for those of us that have ancillary type of services that we provide to our community, like an airport services, uh, cemetery and things like that, that separate budgets are actually prepared for that. And then the combination of all of our budgets together is what gets reported in there. So they can, so the people can actually clearly see why our costs are a lot, lot higher than some of the other, um, councils. My last point is that, um, what's the purpose of these reports and what are these reports going to do? Do they have any teeth? I mean, at this present point in time, I think it's nonsense because this information that Escoza's looking for is already provided. I mean, they can get access to our audited financial statements each financial year, that gives them the history. So why am I going to pay fifty odd thousand dollars to give them the same information that they can get freely from our website? That's it.
Thank you, very good questions. I'll hand over to a CEO to discuss.
Yeah, so just responding to those, uh, three questions or matters that you raised. Um, the, there has been no, um, um, the information provided in terms of the form and content of the reports that have been provided. Um, so we are unaware of what the, the reports will look like. Um, so I think the, uh, feedback that we can send to Escoza was that, that would be, that very evaluating to be able to see uh, what sort of information will be reported. Um, in relation to the second item, um, I would suggest that Escoza would not want to look at, um, adding complexity of their reviews of local governments, um, to go down to council by council, looking at what services are unique. So whilst the, the premise of your suggestion, councillor Soto, makes sense, um, uh, that would certainly add a lot of time and, and cost, uh, to their work. Um, and, uh, probably a fair bit of debate as to what is a unique service, um, versus, um, um, not a unique service. Um, and then the third item is, uh, what is the purpose of the report? So, um, uh, Escoza's, um, uh, brief is to provide advice, independent advice, uh, to councillors. Um, the, there's a requirement that their advice needs to be, uh, reported in our annual business plan and budget. Uh, so that, and our annual report as well, I think. Um, so that's the advice that they provide to council is, um, available to the community at large. Um, and if they were to make any recommendations, uh, that would obviously be included in their advice. But there is no legislative requirement, uh, for council to heed uh, the recommendations that come forward, uh, from, from Escoza. Um, obviously, um, we certainly give, um, due consideration to any recommendations, but there's no legislative requirements um, that we must, um, accept their recommendations. Um, and certainly no statutory requirements or, or, um, um, potential penalties that council, uh, decides not to accept or makes a decision that may be, um, uh, contrary to Escoza's, uh, recommendations.
Uh, councillor Stipos?
I, I get that, Justin. My concern is if they give us a negative report, do we have to publish that or do we get the opportunity to defend their comments? Because our council is totally different from that of Burnside and some of the Adelaide councils with some of our costs. And therefore our rates are going to be slightly higher. Um, I would hate to see a report come from Escoza that bags the CPI rise for the while of council, uh, when I think we've got just cause to increase it more than CPI. Um, and that is because of the services that we provide. So if they send us a report and it has to be published and we don't agree with it, well, who's right and who's wrong?
Yeah, uh, through, through the mayor. So the only legislative requirement that we have is that we must publish the report. Um, in publishing the report, we would obviously have the discretion and the ability, uh, to be able to provide, um, a, a response um, in terms of how our annual business plan and budget or long term financial plan, um, has, um, had due regard to the advice that we've received, uh, from the, uh, from Escoza. And if council, um, which would be obviously the case, if council had good reason to, um, to vary or not accept the recommendations or advice from Escoza because of, um, for example, um, the fact that we, uh, run an airport and our, our ability to, uh, recover, uh, full cost, um, from, uh, to cover the cost of the airport, for example, is, is not possible. Uh, we could reflect that in our annual business plan and budget and long term financial plan accordingly.
All right.
Thank you.
Sorry.
See you.
Um, also, just for completeness, uh, noting that, um, we would only, um, have a review at this point in time, once every four years. Um, and I would expect that, um, the requirement to, um, include their advice would be potentially only in the year that the advice is received or would it be every, every year?
My understanding is the year that it's received.
Yeah.
It's every year.
Okay, that's through the chair, it will have to be published in four years in annual business plan.
Right, thank you.
Okay. So, um, thank you for those questions, councillor Stipos. So we've got a mover and a second there?
Thank you.
You've got a question councillor Knox?
No, just a question.
Okay, thank you.
Or a comment.
Okay.
Um, I did do a quick calculation and it looks like Escoza will raise something like three point two million dollars across councils.
Only at the four, three, four thousand?
A lot of money.
That's why it's being questioned. Right. Thank you for that comment. Right, so I'll ask for a show of hands for this recommendation. Thank you, that's carried. Thank you. Item thirteen point two point eight, page one nine five. A report on the internal, um, review of the council's decision on the childcare centre's absenteeism and cancellation policy. Now, um, would you like to speak to this firstly, CEO, uh, or Cathy? Give a background to this particular report.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Uh, I am also aware that the author of this report, uh, the manager of legislation is online and available to answer any, uh, specific questions that members might have. Um, but as members are aware and as a very, um, a very high overview, um, an inquiry or, uh, uh, a, a request to review the council's decision in terms of the, uh, childcare centre absenteeism, absenteeism and cancellation policy was received. Uh, section two hundred and seventy of the Local government act does provide, uh, a provision whereby, uh, decisions of the council can be reviewed. Um, and, uh, council's policy in that regard has been followed in undertaking this review. Uh, the manager of legislation, um, undertook the review after having, uh, done a detailed investigation to gather the facts and the recommendation is before you tonight, uh, in terms of that review. Um, I'm not going to go into any further details there. I might ask, um, the manager of legislation if she has any comments that she wishes to make prior to council's, uh, consideration of the item. Uh, over to you Andrea.
Thanks Cathy, um, not really, um, I think you've summed it up, uh, but there are, I would just highlight that there are some quite significant legal issues involved in this particular review and, uh, they have been canvassed in the report.
Okay, thank you for that. So I would ask someone to move this recommendation. Thank you councillor Marshall. Do you second that councillor Knox? Thank you. Okay. Right, I'll ask for a show.
I'm not just asking a question. I'm just wondering, is it worth, um, meeting with the people who have put submissions in and explaining to them the reasons behind the, the decision? Um, the good, might be good public relations, might, that might not be the response they want. But it could be good public relations if we offer to meet.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea. Uh, Deputy Mayor Stone, uh.
Thank you, Malabet. I've had trouble coming to grips with this one. Trying to work out, I've read everything over and over, and I can be a bit thick at times, I think this is one of them. What's the difference between booking for a week and fortnight? I think I've gone ahead around it, but I don't think it's an easy one that the average person could understand. Part of me wants to support this and part of me wants to support the community, think we're doing the wrong thing. But I'll certainly go with the majority.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor. I think that we do need to have a, um, meeting with the, um, with the people that put in some, so some very good submissions that have been put into that report, I felt. So I think that's what, um, we will arrange, thank you CEO, so we can discuss it further. And anyone else that wants to participate in, in further discussions. Okay, do you want to go with that? Okay, so we've got a mover and a second there, ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? That's carried. And I'll, I'll, um, ensure that, um, the CEO will get on to that tomorrow. Okay. That's obviously contacted people that put the submissions in to reserve further discussion. Okay, page two one seven, thirteen point two point nine. The, um, recommendation is there, um, stringed, um, so it's regards to the draft of the National Local Government Association's treaty. I'll take this report as, as read, it's really straightforward. Um, would someone like to move the recommendation? Thank you councillor Westman. You're seconding that councillor Stipos? Thank you. Are there any questions? Theo, would you like to speak?
Just wanted to, to just make a, a comment, um. Just in terms of the recommendation that's put before you, this is a, a point in time recommendation. Um, so we've been asked to provide, um, some feedback on the, uh, strategic plan and annual business plan at this point in time. I just want to, um, uh, acknowledge that there is, um, a fair bit of work happening at a regional level in terms of regional planning. Um, and that there's discussions happening, um, not only with the, uh, EP LGA about the terms and, um, terms and functions of the LGA, but similarly, there's discussions happening with the RDA and I think also with, um, um, planning and land use services in terms of, um, the change to the, um, planning legislation around, um, regional planning boards or bodies. Um, so there's a fair bit of discussion happening around, uh, what is happening at a regional level. Um, and noting that council, our council, um, has a foot in two regions. Uh, so at this point in time, the recommendation is that we, we, um, support, um, the, both the strategic plan and the annual business plan. But did want to make the comment that it will be subject to ongoing review, particularly as some of that other work progresses.
Okay, thank you. So we've got a mover and a second there, I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Hey, um, right, item thirteen point three, uh, city growth, there are no reports, and thirteen point four, city infrastructure, there are none. Thank you, item fourteen, um, is forty point, is my list of engagements, thank you. Uh, right, the recommendation is there. Would someone like to move it? Thank you councillor, and, sorry, seconded councillor Knox. Just for that, thank you. And.
Can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Um, in regard to the meeting with the CEO of the RDA, is there any moves to put? Yes, can you say, uh, the RDA come and meet with council?
Yes, um, good question councillor Knox. Yes, that, that was part of our, um, conversation at the meeting. And, um, we will be, um, expecting him to come and present to, uh, the full council. Um, I think it was probably maybe next month or.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Yes.
Through, through the mayor, we're typically looking at the sixth of, um, June.
Yeah.
Um, at the normal elected member briefing, uh, but we're just looking to.
Just confirm that date down.
Check, check our results.
So yes, it was a very positive meeting and, uh, he was very engaging, um, with council and, uh, yes, um, I think it would be good for him to come and present if you want to meet and see what his direction is for the RDA. Technically. Okay, thank you. So, um, I've got a mover and a second, thank you, ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, that's carried. Right. Okay, so. Six, we've got notices. Um, of motion there are nil and questions on notice there are nil. Item seventeen, questions without notice and, uh, I believe we have some, yes.
I'll probably have three questions, Madam Mayor, and I'm.
Just one moment.
Talking to, uh.
Just councillor, Deputy Mayor, just, sorry, firstly go with councillor Marshall. That's okay, no, that's right. Thank you councillor Marshall.
Thank you, uh, just to, just to quickly, um, wondering why we haven't had street banners in Balsyth and Patterson Street for some time now? So all the other ones at the moment, down the Goodson Avenue, promoting cuddle fest, um, and, and all the previous events throughout the year. We've had nothing, so just wondering if they can be installed. Probably all asking for the last couple of months.
Have that on notice and, and, uh, get back to councillor, uh, deliver to councils on that tomorrow, thank you. that tomorrow, thank you. Right. Now deputy mayor Stone.
I guess these are questions on notice, I don't expect answers tonight.
Thank you.
First one, when will the report be submitted to elected members in regards to the disabled access issues at Benidoville and the Maritime Museum, including an action plan to move forward? I know it's been discussed previously and I thought the report was supposed to be with us by now, so that's my first question.
We've got an answer to each of these.
Yep, so.
Yeah, carry on mayor, we, we had our manager of assets and planning, we looked at that. Unfortunately, they resigned last week, so we need to reallocate that body of work out. We have broken the work down into geographic locations and we're in the process of looking at what could be done from our operational budget and what activities could be done, would need to be done through the capital project side of things to address some of the issues that were, that report is being worked on.
Thank you.
Can the report be included in the June agenda, regarding the progress in catching up on street weed maintenance and further include strategies and actions to ensure such a high backlog does not occur again? Having support of that background, I know it could be argued that's operational, but I also believe, and I've raised it before, that it is the sort of thing that many of our residents see as a livability aspect here and now. I don't believe that we put any extra resources in based on our Facebook posts that we put out. And it concerns me that we're coming up to winter again, we will have more rain, I don't want to see us using the excuse again to blame the weather for the weeds. I know it's often seen as dead money, mowing things like that, but our residents are looking at that sort of thing as important to them when they say, what do we get for our land? So I'd like to, it doesn't have to be an episode of War and Peace, but how is our maintenance programme going and what can we do moving forward to ensure that we don't have ugly parts of wild, which does affect the livability visual aspect of trying to get people here to wild?
Thank you, CEO, respond to that. You know, July, Christian?
Through the, through the mayor, I guess just to note that we do have two staff dedicated full time to street weed spraying. So that's two staff working nine day fortnights and there are two large vehicles with vehicle based weed spray units that are on them. So they are working full time as they have done for, for many years. So that, that's the service level that we provide around weed spraying. We also try to engage Bedford and, and there is another community group who helps us with weed spraying in particular around laneways and they have indicated to us that they are not able to increase their service level with the people they have, which are volunteers working with them. They are at capacity in terms of taking on more areas for, for weed spray and indeed hard rubbish pickup. So we are at the, at the limit of what we're able to provide with the resources at the moment.
I'm more concerned about mowing. I took another two hour drive through wild today and I, I do note areas that have since been done, since I think I raised this some time ago. You can certainly see the difference in areas and also some street tree planting that's going on. But my concern is our mowing. It's not up to scratch. If we can't control it now, we need to, as a council, be looking at providing more resources because that's what our community wants. There are still some shockingly overgrown areas and it hasn't just happened because of the rains. When you've got real thick bushes of hardwood and I know how long they take to grow, that's the aspect, particularly in the areas perhaps now, western suburbs and being narrow streets, it looks more obvious. So I'm more concerned about what's our regime doing that and not looking at it as dead money? If we haven't got enough crews on the road to keep everybody happy, then that's something I believe we have to look at as far as how much money gets allocated to it. I must say as an asylum, I was just absolutely flabbergasted, how many supermarket trolleys are dumped in huge numbers? And I feel sorry for the supermarkets because it's not their fault, it's the selfish lazy residents that just use them one way and then leave them on a corner. So there's up to 20 all congregating. But yeah, my concern is the mowing, we're coming up to winter, if we get another heavy rain, it all goes backwards and we never get on top of it. And we do keep pushing this, we want a livable setting, we want the image. The image is not good and our residents that live in back streets have got the rights to have barefoot paths kept as well as our main thoroughfares. Quite sure if some of our senior directors and staff spend an hour driving around the suburbs, you'll soon see what I'm on about to those living in those areas. Yes, we cannot control the care or lack of care on private property, but we can certainly look after our streets. So I'm concerned we don't have enough resources because I think one of our Facebook posts did say that we're working hard as part of the work usual cycle. And I would have thought because it was such a backlog, we should have had more resources going there. So it's a matter not just for the administration to find money, but for us as a council to acknowledge if this is a problem and that's what the community want for their livability right now, we've got to solve that problem for the future as well.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I do have one more question.
So you started, deputy mayor, with a question about street weeds, street weeds? And during the discussion, you've raised the subject of mowing, you've raised the subject of trolleys, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Trolleys is a little side.
Yeah.
The mowing is part of the.
My question is, are you actually seeking an increase in service levels, given that the director of infrastructure says that we've had the same level of resources committed to providing the current level of service for some time? Are you suggesting that you actually want to increase the service level and you want to report about what the cost implications are to increase the service level? Because there is no additional backlog, because we've had the same level of resources committed to this service for some time. So there's no, there's no backlog?
I just noticed that description, there is a backlog. There are some very untidy parts of wild that haven't seen a lawn mower for zocks.
So you're talking about an increase in service level?
If we can't control now, then it's something we all have to address.
Yeah, so I'm just clarifying, so your question without notice is that you actually want to report provided to confirm what the financial implications are to increase service levels from what they are at present, to be able to provide a high level of service than what is currently being provided? I mean, being clear in terms of.
I'm not referring to a high level, but an acceptable level.
Okay, well councillor.
Get pandemic, pandemic. I'm not trying to be hard to get on with the grumbling.
Okay.
Not being unable to cope with our current resources.
Yeah, so, so council is the body that sets the service levels. Okay? And you're suggesting that the current service level is insufficient, so the service level needs to be increased, which will require increased resources. So before we provide a report to that effect, I need an indication from the rest of the councillors whether you agree that the service level needs to be increased, because I certainly don't want to allocate resources to prepare a report if the view is that you don't want to spend more money on increasing the service level.
I want to speak. I think what needs to happen in the, in the short term is perhaps deputy mayor Stone can refer the areas that he has seen and that need attention to CEO and to see whether those areas are going to be attended to in the next, it's on the program, just so as some clarification from infrastructure. I think we'll start with that and we'll get some results as to your concerns deputy mayor. All right? CEO?
Yep. Which coming back to the opening part of the question was can a report be provided on the June council agenda? I'm going to suggest the answer to that is no, because we need further clarification in terms of where the areas.
Thank you, that's exactly right. Thank you. Now deputy mayor, another question?
Final one.
Thank you.
To assist with our budget deliberations, can elected members be advised of staff numbers and wage costs at this time last year, currently, and proposed for 2223? And further, again for comparison purposes, any proposed rate increase information from regional councils in our area and elsewhere, plus perhaps a range of suburban councils, just to give us a better idea of what's happening elsewhere when we have to deliberate for a rate loss?
Okay, so you're, so you're asking for some information around other councils' proposed rate increases, just to, to get a broader picture, is that correct deputy mayor?
Yes, and our staff numbers, wage costs for last year now and what's proposed, so we give a small debate at.
Yeah, thank you.
Mission time.
That one, I'm, I'm, I just think you. Right, thank you, we'll keep moving, councillor Marshall.
Just, just taking up councillor, deputy mayor Stone's points, very valid deputy mayor Stone. I, I think that perhaps if we are going to have a report, it would be actually good to maybe compare perhaps a council like Matt Gambi, which has a huge amount of mowing, weeding, et cetera, that goes on in that council because of obviously their rainfall with their position, just to get a little bit of an idea of how they manage that. I know we did this exercise about 10 years ago, we actually went there and it was one of the things that impressed us the most. It just might be interesting just to get a bit of a comparison and see what they do and how they manage that. I also think we need a scheme, and this was something that we tried to get off the ground some years ago, to empower our community to take more pride in their, you know, in their footpaths, in their verges. You know, you go to metropolitan areas where they've got beautiful verges, but the council are doing all of that, people are actually taking pride in it, even though it is a council piece of land.
So what was your question councillor Marshall?
Oh, mainly the one about comparing, you know, getting a bit of information.
So you're saying this is not a question, you're actually supporting?
Yeah, yes. Supporting, yeah.
Deputy mayor?
And, yeah, so supporting, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Knox?
No complete question. Four questions, but just following some of the council's comments, which I'm able to agree with. If we're going to bring a report back to council, why can't we be innovative? Why can't we look at, what are the reasons of enterprise bargaining agreement in terms of the spread of hours? Can we, can we sort of mass those hours out when there's lots of weeds around, we've had rain, and then reduce those hours when we don't? I'm likely to be thinking about things like that, but the questions that I've got are, the dog park, who owns the sculpture of the dog park, starting to need a lot of maintenance and we're curious to know who owns it.
Yep, we can take that.
Certainly there's a lot of rough on it, so something's got to be done with it.
All right, just one second, I'll give an answer for that.
Thank you through the mayor. So council is not the owner of that art piece? Which means a decision is likely to be made whether or not we keep it or look to return it to the artist.
Well, we need to get on to that because it is deteriorating. Second question, I've never known to be, been in the wild since 1960 pretty much, and I've never seen as many mosquitoes around as we've got currently. Doesn't seem, no matter where you go, you've got moles. I know that in the past council mapped the areas in the mangroves where King Tides left behind lagoons or where major rain events left lagoons as well. We had more mapped, we used to treat them, are we still doing that?
All right. Yes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you through the mayor and thank you for the question councillor Knox. Council currently works and completes its surveillance and control programme within the scope of the SA Health subsidy mosquito programme. What that in, in effect does, it, surveillance is conducted predominantly in the mangrove and the salt marshes area and treatment does occur monthly from October to March each year. The last treatment that, that was done of mosquitoes was on the 7th of April this year. The, we haven't actually received any recent complaints in terms of mosquitoes here at council at this point in time. And although with the cooler air coming through, there is a particular breed or species of mosquito that quite likes cooler air and so that could well be the result of the influx at this moment in time. But we haven't received any complaints of mosquitoes or increased mosquito numbers at the moment. As I said, we do do our surveillance and treatment programme within the SA Health programme. If we start to receive complaints, we'll have a look at the nature of the programme and look to either expand it or not, dependent on complaints coming in.
I'm sure we had complaints. Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Well, that's okay, perhaps councillor Knox, if you do get complaints from the members, they need to, obviously there's a process through council, but they can actually put in their concerns via customer service or whatever. Okay, next question?
No, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Okay, so there, hang on. CEO?
Yes, just, just seeking clarification, our standing meeting procedures requires us to record questions and answers in the minutes. Just want to confirm whether councillors wish any of those questions to be included in the minutes, given their nature, my recommendation is that we wouldn't include them, but we do need to get a resolution not to include them.
So councillors, are you happy with that suggestion from CEO? These are just verbal questions and responses and those taken notice will be delivered, communicated to, to the councillors?
You can may run a second, not record them.
So are we happy for not, not to be recorded?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a mover please for that? Councillor Simpson, I'm second to it. Someone like to second that?
Quick, yeah.
All right, I need to, thank you. Deputy mayor, thank you. Right, here we go, but a mover and a second, can I have a show of hands, all those in favour? And that's carried, thank you. Thank you. Right, item 18 motions without notice? Right. Yep, there are no motions out of that way. CEO, you may speak.
Just again, through the mayor, we've been going for an hour since we started, or you raised the subject of potential members of the public providing some feedback on the energy and the climate side of it. Maybe if you just do a call out for any of the public who are online, if they wanted to communicate that they wish to speak.
Thank you.
Because in the absence of that, we reflect that there is no speakers.
Thank you. Yes, so as we reached our point, are there any people online, any members of the public? Did you have any questions, et cetera, around the annual budget? Speak. Okay, thank you, there are another hour, one of them elapsed. Right. Okay. Questions without notice, I don't believe that there are any, no, thank you. I think we will, we'll break, we'll break now I think, because we're going into confidential. Thank you. I think so too. All right, so I'd like someone to move that we go into confidential please. Thank you councillor Simpson. Marshall, thank you, show of hands, always in favour? Okay, that's carried. And thank you to the members of the public, if you want to know as well. Okay, so as I said, we're now going into the confidential section, so therefore online, as we have in the past weeks, we go into a breakout room and commence that, that part of our meeting. So thank you very much. And if you want to wait, we will come back up into the public at the, at the conclusion of that consideration of confidential items. Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, we're now back into pages and anyone? Okay, we're now back into pages and anyone? Just a resolution to. There up on the screen. That councillor Marshall? Show of hands, all those in favour? That's carried, thank you. Okay, so I'll now, the meeting has closed at eight oh five.